Okay, it's Monday, September 13th. It is 5:07, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Do you need one, Ken? Agenda?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
All right, administrative duties. With some minutes. Okay, so let's jump to the minutes and get through that. Not jump to the minutes, start over. Uh, Monday, August 23rd. Is everybody reviewed the minutes? Uh, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the August 23rd, 2021 minutes.
What's that, Ken?
We have a second. You want to go to discussion? Are those in favor? A lot of time, uh, motion carries. Okay, so PVPC contract update. My update is, I was requested by the board to have a discussion with the town administrator. And my discussion with him was that we do not have, currently, we do not have the fundings in our own budget, uh, to fully, uh, fill the contract, the annual contract for the full year. He is, the town administrator is contemplating using the funds that are, and I hope, I hope I'm not just speaking on Chris's behalf, but using the funds that are allocated by the town to hire a full-time, uh, planning board consultant slash conservation consultant. So with that, we're discussing subcontracting to Pioneer Valley for both services. And I need to get back to Chris to let him know Pioneer Valley actually, um, provides conservation services along with planning. And, uh, I've had a discussion with, with Ken, and they do, so I will give that information back to Chris, and, um, we'll go from there on that aspect. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I guess my only question is, my, uh, how to figure out in the interim to charge my time? Because I've, I have allocated some time based on, you know, previous work. Um, so either amending the contract to whatever's in your current budget until a new contract, or letting the roll, the dice roll to see, you know, if there's a new contract that, you know, that may include additional funding from the conversations you have with the town administrator.
We may have an answer to that question.
Yes, far as, or bucket right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we have $5,010.29 in the account.
So listen, by 2500. Right. Let me talk to Chris first and see if he wants you to amend the contract for what we currently have in the budget, which would cover, uh, basically two-thirds of the year. Or...
Yeah.
Otherwise, he'll sign the budget as is. So let me, let me have that discussion.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns about that?
Well, only one question that I have is, the money that is generally put into our budget, that's money that's allocated by the town, isn't that correct?
For operating purposes? I don't believe so. I think they're self-sufficient typically.
Really?
Okay. We're supposed to be charging back?
Hmm.
For our services, for our consultants, or, uh, PRPUs, we're supposed to be charging back before we're going to cover them, to cover that.
But as we move forward, like, did you go to this next building? So we got to, uh...
Uh, does that go into an hour or not? Or is it not? The way it currently works is it goes into hour. Okay. And we'll continue to charge for our services going forward, and then, uh, the town administrator will guide us on how we proceed with that. Will we reverse the town, or will we use it for additional projects, or do we want both? There's something that's, that's, uh, immediately done, kind of, through the planning board, like updating the master plan hours itself, that goes above and beyond the, the budget, which we probably wouldn't put it out, otherwise, we'd probably put it back in the, in the general fund maybe, to support having, for our town, and so, or, yeah, well, we would be, uh, to say, we imagine, I didn't change the numbers, so, okay? We would give that to Chris or to Ben.
I have a question. Do planning boards in areas, do they all have a consultant at each meeting? I was gonna actually look into that, just, uh...
Well, first of all, not all planning boards have consultants. Some of them have full-time planners. South Hadley has a full-time planner. That is, well, other communities our size, I think Ken could probably better answer that.
Um, communities of 6,000 plus, I think there's two that actually have planning board, um, or planners, town planners. But there, there are communities in Western Mass that are starting to hire, like, for the first time, planning, uh, town planners. Um, so it is something that's occurring. But I think Granby has been utilizing Pioneer Valley Planning Commission five-plus years now, six-plus years. It really is dependent on, you know, the, the sufficiency of the, the board and how the board doles out the various responsibilities of the planning board. Obviously, I'm here to assist with consultation. I'm also here for administrative, you know, I can do administrative tasks, and I do that in other communities. So it really is dependent on the scope. And I think for the past three years, it's, it's been attending all the planning board meetings that usually have some agenda, um, but we've been busy on, you know, doing public hearings for bylaw amendments, um, and the like. But, um, yeah, it really is dependent on, on the community and if, you know, they, they feel like they need the assistance of a planning professional.
So when I first started, 12, 13 years ago, the town was using a private, uh, self-employed consultant. And he retired and decided to, to take other endeavors. That's when we decided to, to look into Pioneer Valley. And it's probably been at least seven, eight years, probably closer to ten that we've been using Pioneer Valley. And it was Ken, and we've gone through several over that, over that period of time that they provided us with, uh, different individuals to, to help us navigate through, um, what the board can't do, you know, our regular base. Each year, we keep getting busier and busier, and, uh...
And things keep getting more technical and more technical.
Correct. And there's a lot of other things that, like Bois saying, that's, that we need to address, and it's hard to do as a part-time group. Pioneer Valley, in particular, Ken has been very helpful to helping us navigate through, a lot of the new legislation that comes down from the state, uh, some of the bylaws that were implemented, and trying to stay on top of all of that, so it's, uh, it's been a good thing. And they stay firm with everything that's, that's happening in the town to help us navigate our, our situations as they, as they arise, so we thank, we thank Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll talk to the admini-, town administrator about how to fold the contract. Bill, next time you get agenda. So we've got some outstanding, Ken, do you have a copy of this?
Um, I have that email from Lil. I'm, I'm following along.
I don't think I want to get into the details of all this, but there's some outstanding debt from, from, uh, prior applicants that have not been collected. And basically, the gist of it is that we, we have some of their funds in ESTRO, and the town, the town, uh, is holding the ESTRO account, so we're going to invoice those that, that owe the town for the process for special permitting. And we will release the ESTRO funds once we, once we receive payments for invoices. And that's what I think Lil and Kathy, another book, uh, sent out letters, Red Rock Solar, Granby Dollar General, Orego Solar, and, uh, those are the basics of the make-nothing stuff. And green solar, right, so, yeah. So that's what we're suggesting, I don't know, should we go around that, or should we, that have Lil?
Well, I think we, we have to do something anyway or another, and I think the, the third paragraph on the front page, I think explains the dusts, and the issue beginning is a concept of proposal, proposal ignoring, ESTRO, and jack, giving these buildings their expenses. Additionally, we can accrue other than the building. With the building stating that that's a lot of this 24, 2021, they have X amount of money being teleported ESTRO. If they wish to send us a check for what they owe us, for this court, I don't know ESTRO, we would be definitely requesting that.
Agreed, so, you want to make a motion? I will make a motion just to what I said, for, and attach a motion with the big EG series of OC, Orego Solar, and Red Rock Solar. We are not at a point right now for, uh, green solar, still waiting for asphalt, and, oh, yeah, you already got the, the, uh, paper. I don't think we need to talk about this one specifically, I think we're just, you're making a motion that we send out invoices to those involved, to those that imply that we'll return the ESTRO funds once we receive payment. Yes. Like payment, payment for special permitting processes. That's your motion? We have a second?
What's that, Ken?
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, I, I, motion carries now, so. Okay. New business. Continued, continued discussion on Torrey Hana Solar, Easton Street. So as the, as the board requested, I had a discussion with the town council. And we cannot waive the bylaw because it's a zoning bylaw, we cannot allow that to happen. We, the board has the authority to waive certain conditions within a bylaw, but not a zoning bylaw as a part. So what the town council recommended, that if the board feels that this was an unintended result of a discussion and an amendment on the floor at the, the, uh, the town meeting, where the, the solar, solar fields were discussed on that article, that unintended consequence, if the, if this board feels as though it should be amended, we should, we should change it, we should, we should write another article allowing this, this type of solar or farm land, um, as, as NGO, Department of, um, Energy supports. Okay.
And then that will have to go to town meeting?
That will have to go to town meeting for approval, so if the, if the board thinks that this was an unintended, well, certainly wasn't unintended from the previous floor, that we did not support it, it was something that was changed on the floor, we have to... It was amended on the floor, it was changed, and it wasn't, this board didn't have a chance to vet it from the original article. So town council, and I agree with them, I recommend that if the board feels that way, that this was an unintended repercussion from that, and that, and that we feel as though we should present it to the town as an amendment to that article, then, then we should, with that, our hearing, treat it like a, a regular bylaw, and move it, move it forward.
And how we're dealing is following the language support by the state, as opposed to the one omitted item, I think it was, within that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty simple, I think, the way that the, um, Mr., what's his name? Yeah, no. Explained it is exactly correct. You know, he also provided in his packet a suggested bylaw change, and I think that does cover the, the, um, proposal that he will be bringing forward or officially. So it does address that particular agricultural exemption, um, for solar on lands that normally, in the way that it was written within your currently approved bylaw, wouldn't allow for it. Um, so I think the, the language does clarify that those types, if approved through the DOER program that, that, um, Mr. Hanna is, and his applicant are, you know, going to be, um, getting benefits from, I think that does cover the ability to construct those types of solar arrays on that type of land. So it is just that, you know, it is a bylaw amendment, and it needs to have its public hearing for the planning board and then town meeting approval.
So, so from my perspective, I'm, I'm in favor of amending that bylaw. I think it's smart farming and smart resources to a lot of, a lot of these property owners. I mean, taking it, taking that option, that solar option off the table from them completely, basically gives them only one option left, or two options left, continue farming, or put in a subdivision. So, so this is giving them a, an option to, to continue doing some farming and having some other repercussions at the same time. And, and I know I sound like a broken record. A subdivision is permanent. A solar field has a life expectancy of 20 years typically, maybe less, maybe a couple years more, based on technology changes and their, and their efficiencies. These contracts that they're writing with the landowners for 20 years, it's not, it's not a forever thing. So, you know, I was, the article that was presented at town meeting was what the planning board in the, in the hearing represented, and this thing got turned upside down and took, took that completely away from them. Basically, it gives them only one, one option, or two options, continue farming, or put in a subdivision, that's, that's what they feel they need to do to... So I'd love to hear from the rest of the board on how they feel about amending the, the bylaw, not allowing solar fields, period.
I think we should be amended to read just what the state says, DOER, in that way, everything is in sync. Because basically, it does say that, but this part was omitted.
Was omitted, yes. Again, it's why articles shouldn't be amended, and I keep saying this, but I'm trying to get the message across. You've got to stop amending articles on the floor to this degree. It's one thing to change a little bit of verbiage on an article, but to turn it, to turn that article upside down on the floor is a misrepresentation from what was advertised to the public.
You are correct.
Anybody else?
I agree with Bob. Yeah, I agree with Bob. David?
So it said farmland, is it farmland of state influence, is that what, did not, did that farmland be considered?
Yeah, and the bylaw, I think the way that it was amended on the floor, because this wasn't part of the planning board's bylaw that went to town meeting, because as the chair suggested, stated that, um, you know, it was changed on the to, on the floor. But the language basically removed any sort of statewide importance farmland from, or having the ability to construct solar on statewide farming, so, um, farmland of statewide importance. So the amendment would allow for it in the instance where, um, the applicant is applying for those incentives provided by DOER.
I just wanted to know more about, like, why they were actually designated farmland of state influence to begin? I don't do very well the answer to that, and I'm trying to research that myself.
I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. Um, there must be, you know, some sort of map that D, um, not DOER, um, DEP, and, um, you know, the, there has been some sort of designation of those farmlands in the past, so I think just understanding that and, um, you know...
It's like, you know, why some are, and why some aren't, and then it gets, I don't know, there's just something like DEPs, you know, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, we'll definitely take a look at that, um, to see how, you know, those lands have been identified and why they've been identified that way. I think that's the important thing. But that, I, yeah, so...
I'm just because, you know, a lot of them try to care about the way the town looks, and we, you know, they want to know that, because I think that's something else, that's a different one.
Well, again, these, these solar bylaws that, that have been put in place most recently tells them they, they, it's not allowed for them to put solar, but it doesn't prohibit them from developing. It just, it just singles out solar, can't put solar.
Right.
But they can certainly put a subdivision.
Right.
So why are we singling, singling out?
Is there something with the, I don't know, if they're saying something with some allegiance to the soil, let's see, I'm wondering if Kevin knows, or if he can find out.
Yeah, that's one of the determinations, how they, they zone, or not zone, but they determine agricultural. Granby zoning bylaws, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the same as, is same as single-family law.
Granby zoning bylaws is the...
There's, there's, they're the same zone, in other words.
Well, we even have to put a subdivision as well, we, we, it wouldn't just be a...
It's a lot, it's a lot by law.
Yeah, it depends on, because the town has mostly single-family residential zoning, this particular piece of land happens to be in that zone, so as, you know, as Jim stated, presumably, if you wanted to build homes on it, you could. He also stated that with regards to solar, the bylaw does...
But I'm guessing, there's a font on it, I was looking at it, and so guessing farmland is what, I mean, I don't know that very well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would have to look at the, the site.
So, so if there's wetlands there, whether it is, whether it is, uh, subdivision or solar, they still have to recognize the restrictions around wetlands.
Right, right.
But my, my point is, we're telling them, you can't put solar in, period, but you put subdivision. You can't clear cut for, you can't clear cut for solar, you can clear cut for subdivision. Why are we, why, and we're a green community, and when we signed up, and we, when we signed up this town vote, that was one of the prerequisites to become a, a green community, was to, to allow solar. So then, so that we were recognized as a green community, and we'd be recognized for certain grants that were available to green communities. And then now, I... And then now, I, to be quite frank, I don't know if that, if that, by the way, that article was voted on eliminating solar on agricultural, if that doesn't put us in jeopardy of not complying?
But it's not limiting agricultural, it's only the farmlands of state importance, right? There's certain ones, that's why I'm telling you, one of those, why are certain farmlands that are limited?
I mean, I just pulled up the various land types.
Like, is it historical importance? Like, what is, when they say state?
It literally says, farmland of statewide importance. This is land in addition to prime and unique farmlands that is of statewide importance for the production of food, feed, fiber, forage, and oil seed crops as determined by the appropriate state agency or agencies. It literally is a state agency determining that that piece of land is a farmland of statewide importance. Generally, these include lands that are near, are that are nearly prime farmland and that economically produce high yields of crops when treated and managed according to acceptable farming methods. You know, and I think, you know, generally, the way that bylaws and solar, solar specifically, is you obviously want to try to, you don't want to... Those types of lands are very important to a community. So, it's preserving it. And there are communities that have passed bylaws to, you know, really prohibit that. So, that is always going to be a conversation with regards to this applicant. That is also another conversation, right? So, you've already prohibited those types of uses, a solar use, on that land, but there is conflict with a state agency that's suggesting that you get incentives because you're also utilizing this piece of land for agricultural purposes and the state wanting to have solar. So, it's just this conflict that exists within the state program and the way that towns have adopted their zoning bylaw. They're going to always have to be reactive when something like this comes up. So, it was either oversight or acknowledgement that there would be no one coming in.
So, it's gonna be, I just don't know exactly what kind of reprofessional they have on the land. It's more of a reading.
Yeah. I mean, and, you know, the thing is, communities have passed bylaws that prohibit solar on prime farmlands and these particular issues. I haven't come across any communities that had to amend their bylaws for applicants that wanted to do solar on their agricultural, that were, on their lands that were already being used for agricultural purposes. So, this happens to be the first community that I know will be amending the bylaw to address this particular aspect that unless you have this exclusion with this particular applicant, prior to that, you wouldn't be able to develop solar at all in the agricultural sector.
So, the purpose of tonight's discussion about it is do we take it to the next step and say, we can have these kinds of conversations that you're bringing up going forward? If we're in agreement that we should at least vet it?
I think so, yeah.
I think we should.
So, then we can have the technical conversation. If we're agreeing to move it, then we'll have our hearing. We'll take public input and go from there. But again, if this is something we feel strongly about going through the process, then I don't want it to be something that we just kick in the corner. If it's something that we want to move forward on, let's move forward on it. Let's do it, you know, timely so that we can catch, it won't be the next meeting, but the following.
Yeah, I think that the third reason we should be amending an annual Town Meeting.
Which is?
Typically, I think.
So, I'm in favor of that.
Because I think we have six months?
You know, that's typically what's supposed to work, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, everyone take a motion, ask to move this forward?
Sure.
Any motion to move the... Hang on a minute, before you do that. Why don't we ask Ken to put together some of the other bylaws that we've discussed? And let's do it all at once, and we'll make it one new package again. Have our hearings, we can have the hearings the same night for each of the items. Discussion and treat it as one. So, for the next meeting, if everybody's in agreement, can you give us, provide us with all the article changes, bylaw changes that we've discussed in the past six months?
So, to note, I think based on previous conversations with the Board and right after the last Town Meeting and your last public hearing, the only ones that the Board were interested in moving forward on was the public event venue. And that was it.
And there was some other ones we talked about that needed to be corrected in our...
I know, yeah, I know that there was discussion about site plan review to amend and look at that. So, yes.
In other words, in other words, if it's a use allowed by right, why are we having a hearing? If it's a use that's allowed, it should be just a site plan review by the Board. The Board can still choose to use a third party to review some of the technical documents. But it shouldn't be a hearing because there's already been a hearing to a lot of that type of use in that zone. So, that was one of the elements to talk about. You know, it's posting a meeting, it's going through the same process as if it was a special permit. But it's not a hearing, but it's not a hearing. It should be something that's discussed here and...
Yeah, so I think to clarify, with regards to site plan approvals, because as Jim stated, if in your bylaw it already suggests that a use is allowed by right with a site plan review, that currently we're going and doing a public notice, posting in the newspaper, and going through that particular notification process. That's not to say that you shouldn't notify your butters because you could, but currently, the way that the Granby zoning bylaw is written is that it follows Chapter 48, Section 9. So, with...
Let me just, if we're multiple communities done, if it's allowed by right, it's the authority of the planning board to review it without, I mean, we, in other words, we can't typically stop it if it meets all the qualifications that, so why have a hearing? Why make this, you're turning it like a special, and we shouldn't do it?
Right. Well, yeah, all of those particular formal processes, yes. Typically, if you had a site plan review, it would just go on the next agenda as an item and go through that process rather than set public hearing time and, you know, and notification to butters and the newspaper and all those other formal things.
And in my opinion, it slows the process. We're trying to be, you know, proactive and bringing business in where it's allowed already. And when companies want to come to town and do business, they don't...
They don't want to touch the stuff.
They don't even bother with nonsense, and they'll take long processes there. Typically, if you're a business and you're looking to expand or something, you're already late by doing it. That's, you know, we've had several conversations about taking that off the, that kind of process and removing some of those things because it's already allowed. You know, who are we to say? So, that's the other one that I like. Group all those into separate articles, but they'll be the same hearing, the same discussions. That's all I have on the agenda. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss now? Okay. Jason Snigro, he updated this on the planning board files. Jim Trunkie, about the zoning section for the solar field. William had the site plan for the farm. She's not here. I think they did follow the...
Yes.
Create a spreadsheet for primary valley funding commission, William. Keep track of how much submitted to Town Meeting for William on going around the farm. That's basically it. Any motion, please, ready? We have a second? Any further discussion? Ken, do you have anything?
I think the only thing that I will say is that I am now going to be working on a separate project with my colleagues at PVPC through the Municipal Vulnerabilities Preparedness Grant. It's going to include utilizing a process that the town went through a year and a half ago to incorporate some of the findings into your master plan. So, there will be a future presentation of that. I know that last year, I think some of my colleagues were working with a committee within town government, the DPW Director, the Town Administrator, I think some other folks. I think, Jim, you may have been on that, but that was to look at some bylaw amendments, not necessarily zoning, but generally, for low-impact development and climate resilience work. But I will be working specifically with some of my colleagues on master plan things through that grant.
Anybody else have anything? All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.